Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, June 29, 2022. All council meetings will continue to be live streamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call. Would Clerk please take the roll?
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus. Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Kelsmith. Ms. Drossberger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Four members present.
Oh.
Is it count?
Yeah.
We were counting you. There we go.
Hey.
Five members present.
Anthony.
Yeah, and I saw you online, so I counted you. Alright, so we now have five members present, so that does give us quorum. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers of the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council and profanity will not be permitted. After your call, please restate your name and neighborhood. For the record, you'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Good morning. Um, Naomi from Bonner. It is outrageous that city workers are being threatened with the loss of their jobs. My life, my choice, it should be the law in a free country. It is absurd to require people to vaccinate for a disease that 99.9% recover from. Regarding reapportionment, our community would be harmed by reapportioning us to different districts. We, the people of Bonner, are best served by remaining in District 4. Our answer is no to reapportionment. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bonner. We, the people of Bonner, have maintained our properties and participated in many functions there. Our community made it extremely clear at our town hall meeting in May of 2021 that we oppose a detrimental property. The solution to this detrimental property is that it be sold to the city for a dollar, it be torn down, and it become a green space. Join our supporters, Mayor Ganey, Councilman Coghill, and State Representative Benham for the creation of a green space. Here is what was spoken at my husband's funeral in January. The Pittsburgh Veterans Firefighters Association. "Michael J. Mullen Reflection" by Battalion Chief Douglas Praskovich. Retired Deputy Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be. And one that should be held away by every firefighter. He loves sharing his knowledge of firefighting and all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name and was always approachable regardless of rank. If you had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Mike was a loving and compassionate husband, father, brother, relative, friend, and I would add neighbor. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life as his obituary so accurately described. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. City Council, are you for the people of Bonner or against the property owners? Do you stand with Mayor Ganey, Representative Benham, and Councilman Coghill for the creation of a green space to replace the detrimental school building? The Michael Mullen Memorial Green Space is the solution for all ages and stages of people to enjoy a peaceful.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Paul O'Hanlon.
Good morning. My name is Paul O'Hanlon. I live on South Braddock Avenue. I'm the immediate past chairperson of the City County Task Force on Disabilities. I'm here today to sound the alarm about the bus rapid transit plan, in particular, the street design. Since 2014, I have personally attended countless public hearings, community meetings, and public participation events around the BRT planning. At each of those meetings, I attempted to raise concerns of the disabled community that we need to have access to the curb. Virtually every vehicle with the wheelchair lift or ramp is designed to discharge the passenger on the right side of the vehicle. If we design Uptown, we'll have an exclusive bus lane on the right side of the street, and if we put all the on-street parking on the left side, then there will be no place for people with disabilities to park or even be picked up and dropped off. If, on the other hand, we follow the same pattern that exists throughout Fifth Avenue in Oakland where the on-street parking is on the right side, then everyone is accommodated. If we truly expect BRT, the BRT project to spur development in Uptown, then it's important that we make it as accessible as possible. Unfortunately, we're on the verge of making Uptown the most inaccessible disability unfriendly location in the city. In 2017, the Disability Task Force wrote to the mayor and chief executive of Seminole Park that the dedicated bus lane from Oakland to and through downtown will create a long corridor through areas clearly designed to be pedestrian-friendly and yet will be some of the most unfriendly streets for people with disabilities. People in private cars will have little, if any, handicap parking and only in inconvenient locations. People being picked up or dropped off by private vehicles operated by friends or family will apparently be forced to do so at distances which are prohibitively long hiked for many of us. In January of 2021, seven years into the process, I was surprised to discover that the design of the future Uptown and whether people with disabilities would have access to the curb were issues totally within the city's decision-making authority. I wrote a sharply worded email to Karina Ricks asking if this was true, and then she put me in touch with Steve Honderman at DOME who was the new BRT project manager.
Thank you very much. Our next registered speaker is Will Parker.
Hello, everyone. Will Parker, Pittsburgh District. It's been a long time, but I'm here to talk about this basic income pilot that was cut by a mirror. You all know that I've been deeply involved with that ERP funding, which is $2.5 million out of $335 million that was put on the table by an outgoing administration that was primarily aimed towards helping black women in the city. Now, my question to you all as a City Council is, who is standing up against this? Are any of you reaching out to the mayor and saying, "We need to revisit this"? Because I don't see how you can cut a program that was aimed towards helping black women without directly supplementing it with something else with another financial solution. You know, again, when Lavelle and Burgess talks about Black Pittsburgh Matters, you guys got to prove it. You guys got to stand on it. You got to prove it. You know, they said recently, you know, we all know that the ruling that came down with Roe versus Wade, they said black women hit the hardest when it comes to abortion rights. So, my question is, why do you guys keep treating black women like this? Give them that money. That was only $2.5 million, and it's not coming out of none of your pockets. When you talk about this initiative being cut, those other initiatives that was included in that spending that was supposed to be allocated that doesn't directly have anything to do with the American Rescue Plan at all. You know, there's a lot of infrastructure initiatives in there that should be revisited and cut as well. I don't see how initiative aimed towards helping black women and giving them money directly was the first one on the chomping block. That's not right, so I'm here to talk about that. I hope one of you guys will revisit that. We're 10 months away from the next primary. Let me tell you who's up for reelection. Bobby Wilson, Bruce Cross, Corey O'Connor, Deb Gross, and Ricky Burgess. Ricky Burgess, you want me to run against you? I don't think you want me to run against you for City Council, Ricky Burgess. So, come on, tighten up. You already been there for 10 years. Might be enough to some people, some people's eyes in this district. I'm just asking you all to tighten up and make sure black women are included and come up with another solution quick to get this money into their hands, okay? Also, I'm interested in starting my own, we don't have any black-led city of eyes in the city at all, no black-led city of eyes. I want to create one. I want to help get that story. I'm also going to be applying for that Stop With Violence grant. So, that work, Lewis Overly's Foundation, know to look out, Will Parker's coming to help.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone with us in chambers wishing to speak? Please come forward. You'll be given three minutes. You can just turn the mic towards yourself.
I'm gonna try to get up. Forget it. Okay. Hi, my name is Bernadette. I'm in Beachview. Bernadette Mozy. Yesterday, I went to see a orthopedic surgeon, and I do not want surgery. I don't have the help. So, I left with two knee braces, two hand braces. I have to return for something for my spine. Basically, if I wore them all today, I would look like a toddler in a snowsuit riding around on my mobility scooter, so. Anyway, coming home last night, I got off after being out in library, I got off of Potomac, and I was coming all the way down Broadway headed towards my place. And it was garbage night in Dormont. It was garbage night in Beachview. So, I was forced to zigzag back and forth in the failed DOME Project zebra lines that are just crumbling and trying to find if any ADA crossed the ramps on the sidewalk. I noticed a lot last night. There's so much rebarb exposed on Broadway Avenue. You could literally hold children's games of tic-tac-toe, toss across, and the beloved bocce. I'm not kidding. DOME, the project failed. They do not need the remainder $1 million to plant trees, which, by the way, when I was coming up along the trolley trussel, passing Wensel and coming up that ramp to the Beachview part of Broadway, I was slapped in the face and the shoulder with knotweed. I don't know who's supposed to take care of that. This cannot go through. They poorly manage the first steps. Very quickly, you could probably, those failed bumpered areas with the so-called painted artsy areas, rent them out for street vendors with the little food carts. You can bring in some revenue for those spaces, but you got to figure out who the heck is going to clean them because right now, all the debris is laying in your gutters that are usually, most often, in those bumpered-off areas. Street sweeping ain't hitting it. I'm telling you, this is going to be a disaster. You got plants growing out of your gutters. That's not good. One more thing. Somebody needs to do a walk-around. I'm not going to name the pool. Somebody needs to do a walk-around and make sure all pools have garbage cans in the bathrooms. I cannot tell you what a woman's bathroom looks like without a garbage can, and we're making our teenage kids clean it. Please? Thank you.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Les Ludwig from Squirrel Hill. And I've come today to have what I hope will be a historic meeting with Chuck Dunham of the mayor's staff in regards to a contract that I'm seeking to raise millions of dollars in non-tax revenue. I would hope that at the end of that contract period, that there will be enough activity that you will have to add an office to handle specifically what right now is $2 million. In other words, in May, it was $1 million and a half that my thinking actually produced, according to Chuck. And by now, I'm assuming, which I'll know later in the day, that it's actually probably in the area of $2 million. That's peanuts. That's little, that's almost pocket change in government with the amount of money that you have a responsibility for. So, therefore, I'm, my hope, besides of making a respectable amount of money for thinking up new ways to raise non-tax revenue, my interest lies in seeing a city where the mayor, if he sees a problem that needs cash, that he has cash available. And I've spoken to Ed about it, and I think he sees the point because he did go to so many neighborhoods where there were complaints, and so therefore, he has an idea of where to probably, where to put the existing books as well as the future ones. Now, so that there won't be any misunderstanding, Madam President of Pittsburgh Council, I hollered out that I would find a way to go ahead and help you with your ambulation problems, and I don't want anyone to accuse me of paying off to get a contract. So, I'm discussing it openly here with you. Your secretary has the notes on how to go about handling that situation. I investigated it thoroughly.
I scheduled knee surgery. You're good.
What?
You're good, thank you.
I was glad to help.
Thank you.
I take the opportunity now to introduce my accomplice. Oh, no, no, no. Dan Quinlan, the former captain of the police force of Pittsburgh, who has some interesting ideas for you.
Hello. Thank you for having me here. My name is Dan Quinlan. I was a member of the Pittsburgh Police for 55 years, retiring with the rank of commander. What Lester and I have talked about is police have to have more contact with citizens, not when there's a problem or not after the problem exists, but prior to see if we can somehow, if there's corners where there's unpleasant people loafing, hanging out, drinking in public, relieving themselves. We should have beat officers, many with canine dogs, walking those streets, clearing those streets so it's safe for everybody to walk and safe for businesses to operate. I personally believe canine dogs are a good, I had two canine dogs during my career. They're an effective way, yet they're trained to be people-friendly. My kids used to almost ride them like horses when they were little. They were, the dogs weighed over 100 pounds, but they were very people-friendly and only got aggressive on command and under control. I don't have much more to say than that, other than that Pittsburgh is a remarkably great city. We've lived our, all our entire lives. Both my brothers have gone into police work, and one brother went bad. He's a firefighter. We always had a little competition between us, if you get my drift. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
What? Oh, Lester has a statement that he'd like me to read. It's.
I'm sorry, sir. Your time has expired.
It's somewhat lengthy.
I apologize. You can submit it to the clerk.
All right.
Thank you.
He says I can submit it.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Council. Tim Stevens, Chairman, CEO of BPEP, the Black Political Empowerment Project. I am a male. I can imagine how upset millions of women are in this country with the decision of Supreme Court of five people overturning a decision of 49-plus years. So, I just wanted to come down to voice support for whatever council can do to protect the women's rights of Pittsburgh and to commend Councilman Bobby Wilson for his proposals. I can't imagine if I had a daughter and she were raped, and that daughter was raped, whatever age, but let alone a child, and be forced to bring a child to term. What about the life of that child versus the life of an embryo? That child will never be the same. I saw a story yesterday of a woman who now has a PhD, who had an abortion, and said if that did not happen, the life that she has now would not be, and now she's ready to be a mother, but her whole life would have been altered. So, I just wanted to support these concepts of if there are any laws that we currently have, that our city makes sure that the law enforcement of our city de-prioritize the enforcement of any legislation that reduces the rights that women have had for the last 49-plus years, and the protection of abortion providers from out-of-state investigation or prosecution for providing such legal services. And this last piece, the deceptive advertising by limited services pregnancy agencies that are stating things that are not true. This is a very crucial time in our country, and I know these are somewhat out of the line, somewhat of City Council, but do what you can do to protect the rights of women in this country and women and men who support those rights.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in Katy with Irving's Tires. Now, I'm going to hold this sign up because I was approached by some people in the community. They didn't get the address, and this is the address for citizens, anyone that knows anyone that's in the jail, and for them to write to the president of council what they are eating. And the reason why I brought that up is, as I said, I went to a meeting and the council person, county council person over the jail, her and the activists had said that our men in jail are being fed feces, and the one man had a half-cooked mouse, half of a mouse in the macaroni and cheese. Now, the reason why I am repeating this is because Mr. Burgess said that I was lying. I knew nothing about this. It's the first time I've been to an oversight hearing for the prisons. So, they said it, and I just repeated it, but if it's so, we need to know. Also, they're saying that they have a calendar of all the food that they're supposed to be eating, and there has been times where they had baloney sandwiches like three times a day for I don't know how many days. So, if that is true, it seems like that company is defrauding this county because if you're paying just baloney and you have on the menu roast beef, that's quite a bit of difference in the price. Also, this is another point that I am really serious about. We don't have a bus to take us from Katy with Irving's Tires, which is up at the top of Bedford, down to Mercy Hospital. We must take two buses to get to Mercy. Now, the reason why I brought this out is because I saw the mayor yesterday, and I said, "Mayor Ganey, you need to fight for us to get a bus to go to the hospital." He said, "Oh, that's county, that's county." I said, "County, but when you had Wheatley, as our state representative, he didn't do anything, so why did you hire him?" Because we don't have a bus to get to seniors down to the bottom of the hill. I remember when Mr. Kraus had buses to take the drunks to the bar and back, to send them out in your neighborhood to kill people driving drunk, but we can't get a bus to go to the hospital. I am up in age, and so is my husband, but I have my daughter that's helping me. Now, yesterday, I was talking, and I forgot to say happy birthday to my husband. Brownie was 81 years old yesterday. When I came home, I told him that I would try to make sure I say it today. Now, because he's been watching TV. Now, at one time, my husband was very upset. He didn't want me coming down here, coming down here arguing with the white men, but he was watching a show called G, and he was saying, "Yvonne, all that you've been telling them that this is our government, we, the people, is the government."
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Are there any other speakers with us in chambers today? If not, that moves us to our Standing Committees' agenda. The first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. Our first new paper is Bill 479.
Bill 479, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City at Tax Sale Items A and B, 507 West Jefferson and 1740 Eckert.
Need a motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 480.
Bill 480, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale to Adjourning Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Side Yard Programs, Item A through T, 615 DeVilleer, Zero Lombard, 4902 and 5447 Rosetta, 5445 Hillcrest, 1116 North Mirkland, 7110 Race and 7432 Race, 714 Naylor, 502 Winterburn, 5008 Glenwood, Exeter, 22 Exeter, 1111 Coniston, 218 Hallock, 533 Griffin, 1232 Sunday, 1318 Warner, 2802 Perrisville, 910 Reese, and 426 Juconda.
Motion to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Need a motion to approve the invoices?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Invoices are approved. Need a motion to approve the intra-departmental transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Transfers are approved. That takes us to Public Safety Services Committee, which is. I didn't, oh, sorry. Need a motion to approve the P cards.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, P cards are approved. That, that now takes us to our Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Councilman O'Connor. Our first new paper is Bill four eighty-two.
Bill four eighty-two, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Jack Lafferty's Truck Parts, Inc. In the amount not to exceed thirteen thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars and twenty-five cent for upfitting of a vehicle for the auto squad.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation, Bill four eighty-three.
Bill four eighty-three, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into a data sharing agreement with the Bloomberg School of Public Health housed with John Hopkins University to engage in a process and outcome evaluation of the Office of Community Health and Safety's pre-hospital birth print no friend program, which agreement shall be at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? Discussion, Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to learn a little bit more about what this is.
Sure. Looking to see who's online. Currently don't see anyone from Public Safety online, Councilwoman.
I'm happy to support if someone who's familiar with Bill four eighty-three could follow up with me afterwards. I'd appreciate it.
I'd like to know too, so I'd rather them come talk publicly because anytime it's public safety and data sharing. I think we need to make sure the public's comfortable.
You want to leave it open and we try to contact someone?
Can we do mine?
Sure. We'll leave it open and come back to it. So that will take us to our Public Sports Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Calkhill. One new, our first new paper is Bill four seventy-one.
Bill four seventy-one, resolution further amending resolution number eight eighty-six entitled resolution adopting and approving the twenty twenty-two capital budget and the twenty twenty-two CDBG program, the twenty twenty-two through two twenty twenty-seven capital improvement program by increasing Harrian Avenue Bridge by three hundred ninety-one thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation, Bill four seventy-two.
Bill four seventy-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for a grant fund from the redevelopment authority of Allegheny County's active Allegheny Grant Program for planning around the McClure Avenue and Woods Run Avenue connection in an amount of fifty thousand dollars for this stated purpose.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation, Bill four seventy-three.
Bill four seventy-three, resolution authorizing the mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into a professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn for work on the citywide intelligence transportation systems project at a cost not to exceed two hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation, Bill four seventy-four.
Bill four seventy-four, resolution providing for a reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design phase of the Harrian Avenue Bridge project, providing for the payment of costs not to exceed three hundred ninety-one thousand dollars. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at no cost to the city. Future resolutions will authorize the project's specific service agreements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question?
Just briefly, just where is this, the Harrian Avenue Bridge, is that in your district?
By our city.
Okay, I wasn't sure whose district. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation, Bill four seventy-five.
Bill four seventy-five, resolution granting unto the University of Pittsburgh their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense three new shuttle shelters to be located in front of Hulman Library at two twenty-one Shinley Drive in the fourth ward, eight council district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation, Bill four seventy-six.
Bill four seventy-six, resolution granting a vacation of an unopened portion of Bryan Street laid out in the Morningside Manor Plan of Lots as recorded in the eleventh ward, sixth council district.
Motion to hold three weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, bill will be held three weeks. Bill four seventy-seven.
Bill four seventy-seven, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Parks and Recreation and/or the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a community partner playground contract with Kaboom to collaborate in the construction of a new playground at West Penn Park in Polish Hill.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
Councilman?
Um, I think this is Councilwoman Gross's district, correct? Okay, what, New Park?
The playground structures?
Yeah.
We just got to start the community planning.
Kaboom is the builder, I guess.
Yeah, it's, it's receiving a grant.
Right. So.
President Smith?
I just quickly, after we do a Kaboom playground, we maintain it, correct? That's what's the last I looked into them.
I've never had one in my district, so others have.
I have.
And I, and our sister is not a yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
The law department said, yes, we do.
Once Kaboom builds it, it's, they're donating their services, they build the playground, we then maintain it.
They build it with volunteers too.
Yes.
But it's an existing playground that we currently maintain. So it's, but it's dated.
No, I know I looked at this partnership before and I was kind of curious about, you know, the benefit of, to be honest with you. But, okay, but I'm glad we're doing something, that's all.
Where is West Penn Park? Where? I'm just trying to picture.
So if you come up the strip from twenty-eight, right? And then you have the, the, the welcome sign with Tommy Doe is there and then you go.
Oh, okay.
Up in Palona.
On the right, got you, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation, Bill four seventy-eight.
Bill four seventy-eight, resolution authorizing the mayor and the Department of Public Works to apply for a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Greenways Trails and Recreation Program for the Arsenal Park Phase One Construction Project. The grant proposal includes a request of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with a local match of one hundred thirty-nine thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars for a total project cost of three hundred eighty-nine thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars for this stated purpose.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
My only question was the matching money, is that parks tax money or what, what fund is that coming from? Is anybody here to?
Councilwoman Gross's district.
Sorry, what's the question?
I, I, you know, I wasn't, I, I guess I'm asking a question to whoever can answer it, but um, the matching money to Greenway Park, I was just, was wondering if it's coming out of the parks tax money.
I don't know the answer to that. Uh, this is a project that was started by Senator Furlough before I was even on council with a donation for, with Councilman Dowd for seventy thousand dollars, I believe, in planning funds. And it's been in planning for a very, very long time. And it's finally beginning. It's been finally beginning to be executed, which is, it's a, it's a miracle.
Nine years later.
It's a miracle. Uh, but I can look into the source of funds before Tuesday if you'd like.
I, I don't really, you know, I was just curious, I thought maybe somebody, you know, was online to answer, but that's fine.
Chris Hornstein is with us, he may be able to answer that question.
Thank you.
Director Hornstein?
Chris Hornstein, Director of Public Works, to answer your question, Councilman, it is the fund sources, the parks tax.
Right, okay, that's what I figured, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation. That moves us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. Uh, one new paper, Bill four eighty-four.
Bill four eighty-four, resolution amending resolution number seven twenty-nine, authorizing an agreement and/or contracts with Bloomberg and Associates LLC for the effective communication services by authorizing funding for additional services within the scope of the contract at a cost not to exceed one hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Motion to approve.
Question, Councilman Calkhill?
Yeah, uh, this is for the signing language, folks? For the council meetings? Okay. Okay, I'm good.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation. That moves us to Urban Recreation Committee chaired by Councilman Burgess, one new paper, Bill four seventy.
Bill four seventy, resolution authorizing the mayor and the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter on behalf of the city into an agreement or agreements with Allegheny County, the Department of Human Services, for the city's operation of its senior community centers. Said agreement shall be for a term of one year at no cost to the city with compensation to the city not to exceed seven hundred eighty-three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. We have one new paper, Bill five oh-two.
Bill five oh-two, resolution requesting the approval of an inter municipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license from China Palace Restaurant to the applicant Szechuan Spice for the premises located at fifty-seven hundred Center Avenue known as Szechuan Spice Restaurant pursuant to amended Pennsylvania Liquor Code four, four six one.
Motion to hold for cable cast public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, bill be held for cable cast public hearing. That takes us back to page six, our open bill is four eighty-three, and I see Laura Dragowski has joined us. She may be here to discuss that.
Hello, Councilman, this is Laura Dragowski, manager of Office of Community Health and Safety.
Can you, thank you, can you give us a brief explanation of the bill?
Sure, um, so this is an agreement that would allow us to enter into a data sharing agreement with Johns Hopkins University Bloomberg School of Public Health. Uh, they will be doing an evaluation of our pre-hospital buprenorphine program, uh, which is a program that's, um, running, uh, in Pittsburgh EMS to provide people who have experienced an overdose or who are in acute withdrawal with a buprenorphine to treat those, um, those symptoms and then bridges them to treatment through the UPMC Bridge Clinic. Uh, we've been working with, um, we have state approval to do this program and we've been working with Chief Pinchock and the rest of the leadership in the for EMS to roll this program out. Uh, we just got approval to actually roll it out citywide. Uh, we're fortunate that Bloomberg's interested in taking on this opportunity to evaluate the program. It will be doing so with no cost to the city. They've also evaluated another similar program in Camden, New Jersey, which is why, you know, among many other reasons, they're a good fit for this evaluation. Um, and so we would be sharing data, uh, historical data about overdose experiences in the city and then ongoing information about, uh, the administration of buprenorphine to patients, uh, that Pittsburgh EMS encounters.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger has the floor, then Councilwoman Gross and President Smith.
Oh no, I was before Gross.
Thank you, I, um, I have no further questions. I appreciate the explanation, wanted to understand a little bit more of the mechanics of this.
Thank you, President Smith, then.
I just want to know what information they're, they're sharing and with whom, that's all. I mean, is there anything, and when you talk about the overdoses, is there anything with their personal records or information that you're sharing?
There is identifiable information, they have proper protections and, um, protections for protected health information in this sharing agreement. Um, it's a limited scope as to who would receive that information. And it's, and, and for clarification, it's all been reviewed by our law department, uh, and by Pittsburgh EMS.
So everything that's shared will be shared with the law department before you share it?
The law, law department would not see the protected health information, but they're aware of the data fields that are being shared.
I'm, I think I'm, I think I have to have a longer conversation, but I'll wait till, so I'll probably abstain today.
Councilwoman Gross?
Hi, yes, thank you, Director. I am curious in the other evaluation programs, um, with other cities that the Bloomberg School of Public Health has done, uh, what is being evaluated? Normally evaluation means that, you know, are you achieving your, the outcome that you desired? Or is there a level of success and how close to that did you, you know, is your program achieving? Or is it, is it, uh, arriving its kind of outcomes? So what are the outcomes or what is the definition of success?
Yeah, that's right, it's, it's absolutely right. So they'll be looking at recurrence of overdose experience, uh, connections to treatment, so follow up with the bridge, um, clinic referral process. Um, there is interest, but this is not our data and looking at fatality data. Um, that's something that would be an ongoing discussion with our partners in the county, but that would not be information that we would have available to share. So it really would just be looking at, uh, frequency of, of recurring engagement with EMS, uh, ongoing overdose rates, which would be identified information and, um, connection to clinic, clinic services.
So it's a kind of panel study where they're tracking individuals to see if that individual has an overdose recurrence or readmission to hospitals?
We would not look at hospital admission and we wouldn't be looking at data related to any other encounters with Pittsburgh EMS. So, um, if someone, you know, had a cardiac event, unrelated use, substance use, we're not, uh, making that information available or tracking them on that basis is strictly substance use related or overdose related events.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
One abstention.
One abstention? Excuse me, affirmative recommendation. That exhausts our agenda for today. We do have meeting announcements. This afternoon, Council will hold a briefing with sessions at two and three PM in the large conference room, conference room on updates from the proposed annexation of Waukesha Board Committee members. Monday, July fourth, our offices will be closed in exuberance of the July fourth holiday. Next week, Council will hold our regular and standing committee meetings on Tuesday, July fifth and Wednesday, July sixth, respectively. Speaker registration closes at nine AM Tuesday and Wednesday mornings. On Thursday, July seventh at six PM, Council will hold a public hearing on the proposed annexation of Waukesha in council chambers, registration closes at three PM July seventh. To register, to register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the city clerk's office at four one two two five five two one three eight or email cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. Anything else from members?
Yeah.
President Smith?
Thank you, I just wanted to, um, first tell everybody, I hope they have a good, fun, health, uh, safe Fourth of July. Um, I want to thank Cornell Jones for all the work that he does to make sure, and working with the police department and the police officers for making sure that we do have, and our special events department for making sure that we do have a safe Fourth of July in the city. But I also want to thank the members, over the weekend, we had a meeting with, um, some of the most at risk youth in the city of Pittsburgh to have a conversation about how City Council can help, um, address some of the, or maybe hopefully reduce some of the violence in the city. And it, and a lot of it came because we keep, you know, funding organizations, funding groups and, um, the frustration with increasing numbers of violent crime and, and homicides are, are just, you know, it's shocking to us and we're trying to figure out what we can do as a council. So we decided to go to the youth and their families and it was so enlightening, I think in so many ways, hearing especially what the kids were saying when they were separated. Um, and I didn't get to see, hear what the parents said, Councilwoman Gross was able to stay in that, um, in that meeting. But they broke us up. I want to first thank Sister Mary from Save a Life Today and Cornell Jones for helping to organize that event. I want to thank the Pittsburgh Penguins for not only hosting the event, but paying for the lunch and for the, and providing all the space for the families and for the, for the kids. Um, I want to thank Councilman Burgess, Councilman Lavelle, Councilwoman Strasburg and Councilwoman Gross and for attending in person and Councilman Wilson for sending, um, someone from his office. I want to thank the others who were unable to attend. Councilman O'Connor was coming with his, um, child because his wife was ill. Now his baby's ill. Um, I want to, um, so he was, he was on his way. And I, and I know that Councilman, um, Kraus is, was busy at the time with a lot of things going on in his office. And I spoke with Councilman Calkhill and, um, and he was interested in attending too. So I just want to say that we had a lot of interest from council, so I want to thank you for that. But I really want to think, say that, um, during, and I want to thank the mayor's office too, the mayor came himself and spent a good amount of time, he was supposed to just come for a little bit. And then he spent most of the day, the time with us, he and, uh, his chief of staff Jake Wheatley. And they were very helpful as well. And I think it made, the kids were so impressed that he came and spent the day with them, that they were worth coming. And that's what they basically were telling Sister Mary, that they felt worth, worthy, that they were surprised that the mayor felt that they were worthy of coming to stay. Meanwhile, I, I felt like we were all enriched and blessed by their, by their attending and taking the time to talk to us. But some of the things that they said, I think were, um, surprising, and it gave us a list of things that we're going to start working on. I must work with Reverend Burgess and Councilman Lavelle, because they've been doing a lot of work in this area, um, to draft the list of what some of the things we heard, try to, uh, capture what, uh, you know, some of the things they were requesting. But some of the things they were requesting were things that we've already been working on and already been talking about. So I'm happy to hear about that. And a lot of it was the youth sports programs that they would love to have that opportunity to be able to play sports and. to be able to play sports and, you know, class is a factor a lot of times. And for the girls, tell them, tell them what they said.
Do you mind?
They did, they wanted, uh, they wanted to do the programming, but not only football especially. So, because, uh, they didn't want it to be only, you know, they wanted to, uh, have their own chance at, at programs.
Well, I thought they were really, uh, enlightening because they said they wanted to learn, like, things we did when we were, like, in Home Ec. Um, they had, some of you may not know what Home Ec is. But it was when they asked if they could learn how to sew, how they could learn how to get a, a driver's permit, a license, um, write a check, things that, you know, they, you don't, we take for granted, they just, you know, haven't had the opportunity to learn. And so it'd be good to partner with Pittsburgh Public Schools in making sure some of these things are occurring. But if we can do some things with city parks, it'd be great, too. So I think those are some of the conversations we'd have. I thought one of the most, you know, the girls were, they were brave. They said that, um, they really want parenting classes and that was, that was overwhelming. They wanted their parents to have the help. They need to be the best parent. And then we had, um, the boys were saying things like they wanted to be a carpenter. They wanted to learn, you know, they wanted to open their own business. They wanted to flip homes. But the one that really touched my heart was the one who said that he just wants to grow up to be an adult without a record. And I mean, just, you know, just hearing, like, they, they were, it was just something you really want to help. And, and you really, it really makes council feel like, they really gave us some marching orders and I want to make sure that we follow up on that. But if, I don't know if any of you wanted to add to it, but I want to thank you all for spending the time with us and caring enough to put forward some things that we know that will help the kids. But we are going to have a follow-up meeting here in council chambers with the kids and their families. And they, they ended the meeting with the mother apologizing to her child for her own mental health affecting the way she raised her child. And it was just so, I mean, we, I think we were all crying at that point, so. So I just, I want to thank the families for spending the time, the kids for spending the time with us and, and really enlightening us and, and caring enough to try to help other kids as well.
Councilwoman Gross?
I just simply want to acknowledge that this started with Councilwoman Smith and it was entirely your brainchild and it was deeply moving and really important. So thank you for your leadership.
Thank, Councilman Calkhill?
Yes, thank you. Um, you know, Madam President, it really was a great idea. I love getting down, sitting down with the kids. I thought it was really great. And I was really sorry I wasn't able to make it. Um, I definitely will attend the next one and look forward to that. I couldn't make it though because, and I want to throw a shout out to, um, Director Vargas. We had the reopening of Moore Park Pool. And, and it was great. And Director Vargas and Director Hornstein were fantastic in every which way. Um, coordination with the city and we had bands and we had music and we had food, food trucks and probably three, 400 people there. Um, so, and I really got to sit down with Catherine and Shelley Treleke, who's the head of aquatics. And I know you and myself and Councilwoman Gross worked closely on the pools last year and, you know, making sure that we could open as many as we could. Uh, we did open three more this year. It's actually Phillips Park is actually being worked on this year, so they're taking the time where they couldn't open it. They're going to have it not quite rebuilt like Moore Pool, but, you know, it's going to be ready to go next year. And really got to learn a lot about the lifeguards. These lifeguards are really great. I mean, such nice young kids. And how many it takes, it really, they, I think there was nine or 10 there that day. And, and they work in shifts, so just one pool. And Moore Pool is the second largest pool. I think Highland is, is the biggest. But, um, but yeah, I really got to see the operation and talked to Shelley in length. I told her that the three of us would sit down and, you know, talk about how we can maybe increase the wages for the lifeguards next year and the managers. Um, so, uh, they feel like they can attract more and that's really what's holding the pools back, all of them, from opening. It's really the lack of lifeguards, so. Okay, but I know, I just really wanted to compliment you. That, that sounded great, uh, you know, your, your event and I look forward to, you know, attending the next one.
Well, I, I'm thinking maybe you can help us maybe do some kind of roof training or something for the kids.
Love to do that.
They really want to learn some skills.
You know what? I've talked to you about that. I've talked to Deb about that, you know, I, I, kind of a job fair, job training, career day, call it what you want, but I've already got kind of people, so about five or six people lined up to participate in that and all different aspects and professions. And that's something I'm very passionate about.
A lot of people don't know that, I'm going to say this, Councilman Calkhill stepped up and ran his athletic association. But when I first met him, it was through some young kids who were saying how great you were. I'm like, are you sure?
What are you laughing about, Bernadette?
They started telling me stuff about you and honestly, it was all how much you cared for them. And I told people how you stepped up and stopped that one kid from being bullied just a few weeks ago. So, I mean, I think you have a passion that people don't know about and I think you'll have to use that a lot to benefit more kids.
Go on, go on. The floor is yours.
But I just want to thank everyone.
Thank you, Madam President.
I think we're on the right track. I think that's good to know that much. But they ended it with saying one thing, that they wish that we would put more money in preventive programs instead of being reactionary after kids get in trouble. They want us to do more to stop kids from ever getting it down, going down that road. So I don't know what that looks like, but I hope together we can figure it out and do something to make the kids feel like their time was well spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, need a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.